I'll call this meeting to order. Board member Joy Naylor is unable to attend today's board meeting. 1.2, we have a quorum. 1.3, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. 1.5, I will now, I will now identify closed topic items. Public employee reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, anticipated litigation. 1.5, public comment on closed talk, closed session topics. General public comment and any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. There is no public comment. We will now adjourn to closed session. Good evening. I'd like to call this public session to order. Board member Joy Naylor will be unable to attend today's meeting. I'd like to welcome our student board representatives for the school year. They are seated in the audience and will shortly be sworn in. Thank you for serving. 3.2, introduction of interpreter. Gus Mora will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete en español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español. Elir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de estas salas de reuniones.
Thank you. 3.3, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out a public comment form, a green form located at the table in the back of this room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting in the corner on the west side. There you are, of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone stand located in the front of the room. 3.4, our pledge of allegiance will be led by board member Randy Vegas.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.5, I'd like to report action taken in closed session. The board took the following action in closed session on a motion by board member Case Spirit Saleno and a second by board member Gabby. The board voted six yays and one absent to approve a settlement agreement between the district and the parties representing OAH case number 2023060019 and 2023060135. 3.6, there are, the following are revisions to our agenda. 5.1, 5.3, 7.6, 7.7, 11.1. May I have a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
On motion.
On second.
On a motion by board member Case Spirit Saleno, second by board member Gabby, on favor.
Oh, sorry.
Board member Vegas.
Motion passes unanimously with one absent.
4.1, introduction out of office installation of student representatives to the board for the 22, 23, 24 school year. Mr. Thompson, Assistant Superintendent Learning and Leadership.
Well, good evening, board president, board members, Superintendent Schrum, and all of our site leadership and community. Today's an exciting day as we get the opportunity to install our new student board rep for the 23, 24 school year at this time. Would you guys please go ahead and stand up? So I'm going to ask you to do first, give my hand. First, if you would speak up as well, would you introduce yourself and what school you are representing as our student board rep this year? Perfect. And we do have a Sequoia rep and we're hoping they will get here soon. If not, we will install them at another time. At this time, students, would you guys come up, turn around and face the audience? And we will go ahead and do our swear you in into your installation. So first raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of student representative to the Board of Education upon which I am about to enter. Let's give them a hand. They have just been installed. At this time, I don't know if you have few words, Mr. Schrum, but we would like board members to also join them. And we will, you want to share a little bit about what you guys will be signing? Congratulations. We're excited to have you guys as board representatives.
All right. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Thompson. Our board is going to come down. We'll do a group photo as you're now part of our board. And then one of the campaigns that we have this year is our IMVUSD. We're going to be prepared, connected, and kind so that we will achieve academically and socially. And so then all of our board members and student board members will sign that and we'll have that on display. So we'll start with a group photo and then we'll do the signature. And again, congratulations. Look forward to meeting with you and our advisories and your import and your impact on our board. Thank you. We are excited to have their voice at the table. This is a great thing we do here in Visalia Unified. This is not something you see in every board across the nation. And I think it's very powerful that we have a student voice, not only at the board table, but also these students are part of my student advisory that will be meeting multiple times throughout the year where they're able to bring concerns, questions to the table so that we take student voice into account in all of the decisions that we make as a district. So again, congratulations.
5.1, spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Schrum.
All right. Well, good evening. We are back, back in school and excited to bring back our spotlight. This is always one of the most exciting reports, I think, that we do because we get to spotlight and highlight all of the great things that are happening in our district. And of course, as any district or any business or any entity, you know, every now and then, you know, things are not always perfect, right? We have to acknowledge and work on things. But at the end of the day, overall, we have had a phenomenal start to this school year thanks to our teachers, our parents, our students, our support staff. And we are already well into routines and procedures all across our district. And I have visited every site and see amazing things happening in and outside of our classrooms. And so I'm very excited to share our first spotlight for the 23, 24 school year. Want to begin with our foundation slide. And of course, as a board, our board sets the direction for our district through policy and our commitments there. You see our beliefs and commitments, our commitment for student learning so that we can make sure at the end of the day that every student is successful, right? That's our ultimate goal. And then you also see a box there because working in process, and you're going to hear a report on this tonight, is the development of our strategic plan. So how do we make our beliefs and commitments come to life across all of our schools and for every student, teacher, parent, and others? That's going to be driven by the work that we do in our strategic plan. And so later this fall, as we also develop a vision and mission, you'll see this slide continually evolve as our foundations continue to grow. So I wanted to highlight you to that. And so kicking off our summer activity, we had several activities this summer. Some highlights include our FFA teams working on caring for their show animals and other businesses around the farm. And several ASB students from across the district attended CADA, C-A-D-A, a leadership camp where student leaders across the country get together to work on their skill set. So very exciting there. Also, and we have some special guests in attendance tonight. We had several activities during the summer. Some include our FBLA team took 11 students to the National Leadership Conference this summer where the following students won awards. Adam Hacker, fourth place, database and design applications. Tyler Sapsat, ninth place in computer problem solving. And Jacob Hutchinson, 10th place in impromptu speaking. And I think we have a couple of members. Please feel free to stand up so that we can acknowledge you. Thank you for being here tonight. We have a very proud sponsor as well. So thank you to our teachers and others that these things don't just happen. Our kids need support to make these programs happen. And so so many of our teachers go above and beyond to sponsor clubs, to sponsor activities. These things don't happen without that leadership. And so to all of our teachers, our sponsors, and all of those, I want to say thank you for not only FBLA, but also all the many other opportunities that we have across our school and our district. So congratulations. I think this is a yearly occurrence, too. This is a pretty, pretty strong group that we have here. All right, moving on to convocation, of course, one of the things that we do toward the beginning of the year is as everyone comes back is bring our teams together. And we changed the design of convocation this year. Last year, we all went down to the downtown and to the convention center and which was wonderful, right? A great way to start. It was the first time kind of back all in person from COVID and all of that. But what we learned throughout the year is what our teachers and staff really wanted the opportunity to do is be together and collaborate. How do we get better together and spend some time in our, in our job alike groups, right? First grade teachers together, math teachers together, our classified workers coming together to receive professional development. And many of them received a stipend, of course, came in off of their contract because they were so interested and wanted to be developed. And so we're excited about our conversation. Convocation was a great way to start the school year in August. Over 1,000 classified staff attended training. All of our certificated staff participated in professional learning communities where they focused on how we're going to start strong, our processes, our procedures, our routines, and what are the first units we're going to teach, right? So that they can confidently start strong that Thursday. And of course, in our commitment to student learning that you saw referenced earlier states, our board believes in empowering teachers and staff through professional learning communities to make instructional decisions within guidelines to meet the different needs of each student. And so as a district, if that's what we're committed to doing, we wanted to make sure we provided the venue for that to happen. And so great convocation day. Thank you to all of our staff that helped plan that. That's a huge logistical feat and it went off perfectly. So thank you to all of our team for that. And then, of course, we rolled into that Thursday with our best first day ever. And we had a little kid at one of our school sites say, well, wait a minute. Didn't we have the first, best first day ever last year? And yes, but we're going to have it again this year. You can have it every year, right? It can just get better and better. But you got to love our kids, right? No, remember, we had that last year. But we really did have the best first day ever. And so again, thanks to our parents, our teachers, and so many people that focused on how do we make sure we start this year strong? And so we have a couple of slides just to highlight. I mean, day one was already in motion and we had schools going over their routines and procedures. We had teachers going over their syllabuses and classroom instructions. We had, for the first time, I don't know how to describe it, but, but a non-traditional start to the day. I think about one of our middle schools, Divisadero. And instead of your normal, like coming in, sitting down in the classroom, you know, hear the rules and all that. Sorry, went a little southern there. Here that, you know, our expectations and all of that. It was a day around getting to know each other. It was a day around bonding as a school. And so they had a whole day of teacher-led, staff-student-led activities, fun games, but all with a learning purpose of how do we norm around what we expect from each other? And talked to several of the kids and they had some water activities. And just what an amazing way to start the year. And so shout out to all of our schools who did so many great, unique things to really make that the best first day ever. And so you see a couple of other, one of my favorite t-shirts. I don't think we have a picture of it, but it was at, now I'm going to forget the school, but Walter was there with me and the little kid shirt was, I'm ready for school, but is school ready for me? And I was like, you know, that, that's my favorite student right there already. I can tell. So, but again, a best first day, smiles on our students' faces, smiles on parents' faces as a say goodbye, like finally, you know, it's been two long months. But again, so many great things happen in our schools. And so want to show a little video kickoff rallies. I mean, just so many exceptional things happening all across our district. It really, it really was exciting. So I think we have a little video queued up that highlights a little bit about our first day. So again, just again, thank you, teachers, students, staff, everyone that just came together, our leaders, our community to really make it an amazing start to our school year. And I love the little image at the end that just captures the joy and the excitement of the learning and that occurs every day in our classrooms all across this district. So a great start. So as we move off. It is good. I mean, I could watch it again. Spotlight on schools, community outreach. We also had a lot of events that our schools put together to, like, bring our community together to help our kids be ready. Great events at Goshen and Visalia, Green Acres to provide students with resources, backpacks, healthcare information, enrollment into after-school programs. We have a robust extended learning opportunity program at all of our school sites. And we really hope that our families are taking advantage of that. You don't need to rush to pick up your kid at, at whatever time it is, right? We have programs that run until 5:30 or so every day. Ivan Ho hosted a national keynote speaker to speak to students and parents about the role education plays in their child's future. And they had a great turnout as well. So our family's very involved. We're in the middle of our back-to-school nights. And of course, all of our schools, you know, preparing, families coming. Here's how you can support throughout the year. These will run through about the end of the month, a couple extended into September. And you can see some images here of our families coming to the back-to-school night and receiving information, getting to meet the child's teacher, all of those sorts of things. And then one thing that I'm very proud of from a state standpoint with the, with the passing of Proposition 28 and the funding and our board's support of being ambitious and moving fast. And we know that when we move fast, you know, there, there are some things, you know, it doesn't always go off without a hitch. But at the end of the day, why we felt it was so important to not wait to take advantage of the funding that was coming to us is for the first time across the district, every one of our TK, first and second and third grade students are receiving each week art, music, and PE. And before our classroom teachers, they do wonderful work. But if I'm a classroom teacher, I'm not necessarily a specialist in all of these things. And so now we have teachers who are focused on that instruction. I visited several classes, the, the first one on the top left, I could even sing for you. I won't, the song that they were singing, it starts, it goes gilly, something like that. I could sing it like it was that good, right? And the kids, the first day, like, they're sitting there enthralled, right? And learning. And you think about the connections this will build for kids and what that looks like in five or 10 years when they're in middle school and thinking about when I, do I want to be in band? Or where they're, you know, when they're in high school, do I want to be in a sport, right? All of those things help build our pathways. And so thank you to our voters and others, and also to this board who said, no, we need to be ambitious. We got a head start on hiring staff. We've hired 50, 60, well, actually probably more than that when you add up all the subjects of new positions to deliver this instruction. And while we're working through some fine tuning and those sorts of things, these individuals, the teachers that have risen to take on a new opportunity, there's not a playbook, right? There, we're building it, right? But these are, I mean, it's just amazing to see the learning that's happening in our classroom. And I, and even though this spotlight is on TK through three, I do want to mention that this funding was also used to enhance our secondary programs as well. So adding positions that we've never had before, like assistant band director, right? So now a band director has additional support. You can have more kids in the programs now and other, you know, other programs as well. So while we're spotlighting TK through three, just also want to make sure I mention that there were enhancements added all throughout our K-12 landscape in this area. So thank you for that and look forward to just seeing the, the learning and the connection. And you know, a lot of kids will come to school and they're not going to miss art day, right? They're not going to miss PE day because they make those connections. And that follows them into learning and into the classroom. And now in our secondary sites, we can bring more students into these programs because we have additional staff to help. So super excited about that. Thank you to all our coordinators that helped pull this together in their teams. The risk of naming people, John, Dan, and many others, Destiny, just to name a few. I probably, you know, the problem with naming names, you can't remember, you know, get them all. But just, just a huge shout out to our district team and our site principals for creating the conditions for all of this to happen. And then speaking of, oops, I clicked too soon, our amazing staff. We have also two guests who are joining us here tonight that I want to highlight. And I'll make you stand up in a minute so you can sit down right now. The first one I highlight there on the left, Nancy Newman, Assistant Principal at LD Amante High School. She was awarded the 2023 Inspirational High School Educator Award. Two of the 12 awards went to LD Amante High School with a merit award also given to Paige Martinez, a student who is starting school this week at UC Merced. So Nancy, would you stand up and let us acknowledge you? And then another familiar face for our FFA. We have from LD, also from LD Amante, Amy Veldheisen, who is the FFA teacher. She will be awarded the honorary American FFA degree by the National FFA Organization. This award is given to individuals who advance agricultural education and FFA through outstanding personal commitment. Amy will be honored in November during the 96th National FFA Convention and Expo. So will you stand up so that we can acknowledge you? And, and while Ms. Newman is now an assistant principal, I can say I have been in both of these individuals' classrooms and I can affirm their commitment to students and the passion for the programs that they lead, Avid, FFA, and others. And they're just, their classrooms are, and the programs they lead is just wonderful places. And so all of our students that get to benefit from working with you, just thank you so much for what you do for our students and our district. So congratulations. And they represent many, many other teachers who I'm sure they would be quick to say, we couldn't do this without them as well. And so, you know, just a spotlight of our amazing teachers we have. Speaking of our teachers, one of our initiatives this year is making sure our teachers have opportunities to collaborate, our professional learning communities. And so Assistant Superintendent Thompson and I had a chance to go out last week and surprise a couple of our PLCs. These are gray levels that showed exceptional growth on our state assessment this past year. And we walked into three PLCs spread across a couple of schools. And, and the minute we walked in, it was obvious why that was the result they got. Already, this is last, this is the first week of school. They already were analyzing student work and data. They were already talking about based on what we're seeing here, what does this mean for our instruction? Already on like the fourth or fifth day of school. So it's no wonder the students that are in their class are benefiting and showing strong academic growth and they did not miss a beat. And in fact, what was so powerful about it at one of the sites is they had a teacher from another school who was there because they were what we call a singleton. Their only one at their school. And so they had invited this person to come be part of their PLC. And I just thought that was, that was so, so powerful. So congratulations. Thanks to our teachers who work hard every day to create the conditions for our kids to be successful. And also thank you to our board, our investment. One of our major focus areas this year is phonics. We have not had an explicit phonics instruction program in Visalia Unified. Our board approved that. We adopted it and that is now in, in place. And so you see some images there. So the cabinet team, this is so important as a district that we all went through training as well. And so come the week of September 18th, I think it is, we will be coming out to the district. We'll be asking for some willing teachers to partner with us. And we're actually going to teach the phonics lesson. Because again, it's important that we model what our expectations are. And so actually, I'm very excited. UC Chief Operation Officer Eric Care there in the middle photo. And, and he's ready. We will be coming to kindergarten, first and second grade classrooms. Yes, we will take pictures, but we're very excited about that. And thank you to our teachers who have embraced this program. It is brand new, right? We're still learning the pieces. We're still unpacking the boxes. But it is going to make a difference as we work to make sure every kid can read on or above gray level by third grade. So thank you to our board for the investment and our district leadership as well. That was not an easy group to train. So thank you for your patience with us, but, but it was worthwhile. And I think, you know, I think we did pretty well. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how it holds up when we're in front of, you know, 20 or so students. I'm sure they'll be very gracious as well. All right. So that's our spotlight on the district. Thank you, board. We're off to an exceptional start and it's wonderful to be the superintendent of this amazing district.
Any board comments or questions?
I do very quickly. So I just want very, very quickly, all amazing things. Mr. Jacob right here, he was also an intern at the Public Defender's Office. And while all of our interns through the VUSD program are all amazing, Jacob just stood out from the second he was there. He was super bright. Sometimes we always kind of see those kids who can just do work that's above and beyond what a typical high school intern can. And so while I'm so happy you won this award, I was not surprised to see you, to see you here tonight because I do think you are an exceptional student and I'm so happy you're part of our district.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. 5.2, focus on safe and supportive learning environment. Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andy Demeo. Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andy Demeo.
Thank you, President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, board members and colleagues and family members that are here tonight. Thank you so much for giving us just a few minutes of your time to talk a little bit about the subject at hand. Mr. Schrum spent a lot of time tonight talking about the great things that are happening in the school district. And we all know those things don't happen by chance. So what I wanted to talk to you about this evening is educational services. Mr. Schrum, introduce to you our upgraded slide. And this is a really important one because again, as we learn and grow and develop, we get to enhance what's happening in our district. And in fact, that's the job we do with our students too. So I'm excited to say that educational services supports the commitments that we have made as a group and that the school board has directed us to work towards. So tonight, you're going to hear what that looks like. So in educational services, I've said this many times. It's our job to make sure that students receive what they need to be successful. And I need to add the word all, right? Because it's every child. And every child needs something a little bit different. It's our job to make sure that we recognize our students by face and by name. And one of the things that we heard last year is when we talked to our colleagues, our families, our employees, our students, we found that there were some areas that perhaps we needed a little bit extra effort. And what we did is we were able to kind of solidify those into three areas. And we found that areas of opportunities for us were in clarity, consistency, and communication. So tonight, I've invited my colleagues up here to talk to you about what those three areas are going to look like in the individual departments for educational services. So first up, I'm going to invite Mr. Jim Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan oversees our family community resources and he's going to talk to you about what that looks like in his department.
Good evening. The Family Community Resource Center is a very unique operation that seeks to support the families in the USD. We strive to connect our families with help and resources to ensure all students are ready and prepared for school. To support this goal, this summer, we organized and participated in over 20 different events. We hosted backpack distributions, conducted 159 home visits, which served over 600 students. These students received school supplies and/or clothes, which helps build their excitement for the first day of school. In addition to these events, we attended many community resource fairs with our outside partners to collaborate around supports around that are available in our city. The FCRC team will be participating in all the back-to-school events as another way to connect with our families. For many families in our community, transportation is a struggle. For instance, when the civic transportation strike happened, we made phone calls to all of the families to help them build up ways to figure out how to get their kids to school. We can, this year, our department has established goals that focus on attendance, grades, behavior incidences, and student, and students' connections to school. That's our clarity. We will be working very hard this year, helping our students achieve these expectations. One way to help our families this year, we, to stay connected to our educational experiences and our ongoing, is our ongoing parent support groups. All these sessions, our communities, our community will receive tools, guidance, and collaboration with topics such as parents who have children with struggle with autism, grandparents raising grandparents, parents who have students new to our, new to our country. And those are just some of our examples. And we're looking forward to an amazing year. Ms. Reed will now be sharing about our ELOP program.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Schrum, I'm excited to be here to present the current state of the expanded learning department. One of our goals this year is to ensure we do not have a waitlist at our 27 elementary after-school programs. Our team has been attending events such as school site council orientation days, back-to-school nights, and weekend events. At one of our last weekend events, actually our most current weekend events, we saw an enrollment increase of 702 students for that one weekend alone. So currently, we now have over 9,400 total enrollments for our fall semester that is serving about 2,800 students. So unique student count is about 2,800. This year, we are offering a variety of program options, including music expression, theater production, ukulele, junior medical academy, multiple sports options like flag football, soccer, basketball, volleyball, track, and pickleball, and a sports exploration class. We brought back coding, STEM, and maker space from last spring since those programs were so popular. Most of our programs will end with a field trip or other culminating experience. To make ELOP happen at all of our school sites, we depend on working together as a community. Many of these programs are run by our VUSD staff members, including classroom teachers, PE staff, and VAPA instructors. Fresno Pacific University and Alevo are two community partners that have been working closely with our sites. Pro Youth has been a VUSD partner for over 20 years. They provide the foundational program for our after-school students. Another endeavor we are proud of is the work we have been doing with the City of Visalia to bring free registration to all VUSD students for swim team over the summer. We had approximately 350 students participate in this program. We are also partnering with SOVA, which is the South Valley Aquatics, to provide free water polo program for students in middle school. We are also launching a new partnership right now with NJB Basketball to provide free registration for students in grades K through eight. Registration began yesterday and we are already almost at capacity. Another exciting partnership is with TECO to bring a full theater production program to every elementary school site this year. We are currently running this program at four sites, Annie R. Mitchell, Conyer, Denton, and Elbow Creek. At the end of the six-week program, families will be invited to attend the show and see their students on stage. I look forward to returning in the future to share more exciting updates from our ELOP department. And now I'd like to invite up Carrie Stevens.
Good evening, and thank you for having me to here to share some of the wonderful work that our department is doing. In Visal Unified, every child is unique and wonderful. And students need standards-based quality instruction in the general education environment. Some students need additional support to help close the performance gap, and that is where special education comes in. Special education seeks to supplement the academic program on an individualized basis to ensure each child gets what they need to access a quality education. Beyond this academic benefit, we look for every opportunity for students to participate in the general education setting so they will have access to their peers and also have a sense of belonging within the school community. In preschool, we're partnering with early childhood education to reduce the amount of time that students are spending in separate settings while still helping them to get prepared for the school setting once they start TK and K. In preschool, we're partnering with early childhood, oh, I just said that, sorry about that. Another area we're working on is how we support students in the middle schools. This year, students are being co-taught by a content areas expert such as an English teacher in a general education classroom, side by side with an education specialist for layered-on supports that we know benefits all learners. With this shift comes flexibility and how we serve students to ensure each child has a differentiated plan that can be tailored to their needs while ensuring all students have access to grade-level curriculum and content. Training began before the school year started with co-plan, co-teach teams from all five middle schools with additional coaching cycles and trainings built in throughout the year. All of this, all of this is happening in a concerted effort with our general education partners in teaching and learning. We provided training sessions to our new teachers in developing a solid foundation for instruction, inclusive practices, and case management. So that's the IEP development and whatnot. Also, at classified convocation, our staff presented on topics such as IEP basics, behavior best practices, and inclusionary practices. And it's really just to put more tools in the hands of the folks that are supporting our students day in, day out, and all staff who may interact with our students with special needs. We know we're not going to get where we need to be without all arrows pointing in the same direction. And we are all excited about this collaborative work because we know it's going to result in what's best for kids. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Brandon Gridiron.
Thank you, Carrie. Good evening, board. So the goal of the Equity and Student Services Department is to build the capacity of our site leaders to develop the systems that meet the needs of our students, staff, and families. And we do this through training, resources, and support. We kicked off the year focused on empowering our teachers to be ready for day one. The focus of, the focus was on tier-one foundations and establishing consistent routines and procedures. And during convocation, each of our amazing site leaders facilitated collaborative dialogue, providing teachers time to work with their colleagues and share ideas and strategies about effective routines and procedures. And as we walk through classrooms over the last few weeks, and we continue to walk in the classrooms, we see these amazing routines and procedures happening. It's really exciting to see. Safety and security remain among our top priorities as we continue our Alice training campaign. We trained all of our new teachers in Alice active shooter training over the summer prior to day one. And we continue to train and onboard new staff. In addition, prior to day one, we had an opportunity to train all of our site administrators on our student code of conduct to ensure there is clarity in our systems, consistency in their application, and consistent communication on each campus across our district. This fall, we will launch our Alice student training, which we'll be sharing more information about that soon. An essential part of our student safety and student success is a focus on connection and engagement. And last year, we hired Mr. Amington, who was our coordinator of connection and engagement, to focus on enhancing site experiences. So this summer, we started with an initiative focused on connecting some of our most at-risk students to help them really be successful in their transition from middle school to high school. And we had over 100 students and staff attend our connection event at Adventure Park, which we thank you for allowing us to do that, which focused on building relationships and making connections. In addition, we launched our district hype day, which focused on bringing our student leaders together where they are trained and facilitating activities to help increase student connection and engagement on campus. And lastly, our counselors continue to work to focus on connecting with every student through classroom lessons, individual sessions, and group activities. And this year, all of our seventh to 12th grade students will have an individualized learning plan focused on charting out their path for success. And so that concludes the report for educational services. We'll take any questions or comments.
Is there any board questions or comments?
I did have one question. I know it was our goal not to have any waitlists for students at any of our elementary sites. Do we currently have any waitlists for any of those programs?
Great question, Dr. Vegas. Ms. Reed?
So currently, our waitlists are a lot smaller than what they were last year. So what we're doing is we're working, our coordinators are working with the site directors on site and to place students into classes to start exhausting our waitlist. So we're slowly starting to get all the students off the waitlist. But it is a process because we want to make sure we have our staff ratios, that we keep those intact.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Remember Gabby.
Mr. Gridiron, can you talk a little bit about the individualized plan? Is that like an academic counseling? Is that something that starts in seventh grade?
Yes. So it will start in seventh grade and it's one part of a kind of a four-part series. So all of our high school students have a four-year plan. This seventh individualized plan gets to know more about the students, their interests, their hobbies, things that they're excited about. And so we want to start early, getting to know more about the students, and that resource becomes valuable for us as we move through the system.
So their seventh-grade counselor is meeting with them?
So their seventh-grade counselor, eighth-grade counselor, and so on and so forth. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say, wow, thank you. I mean, I'm very excited about what's going on. What really caught my eye was the, the partnership between Jen Ed, I mean, between special ed and the content specialists. I love that for junior high. Thank you for creating that, Ms. Stevens, and all of you. Thank you for that. I almost want to cry. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Well, I think what you'll find, and my colleague, Mr. Thompson, is going to be sharing next month, a similar thing. You're going to find that collaboration. And we're working really hard because again, we know every student benefits. So it's good for them. It's good for all of us. So again, thank you all for your partnership and your support.
Thank you. I almost want to clap. Thank you. Yeah. 5.3, our strategic plan update. Our Administrator of Communication, Strategy and Outreach, Andre Pacina.
Yes, good evening, Board President Gamoyen, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum, and our guests here in the audience today. Just want to bring to you real quick a brief update on our strategic plan. So it started, so again, just our foundations, as Superintendent Schrum had mentioned in this, really, you're seeing these key documents that are codifying what you, as a board, have said like, hey, this is what we need to focus on. And now the strategic plan is going to give us more, you know, depth and just really, these are the actions, right? And whatnot that we're going to be moving forward over the next several years. And so the role of the district is super important. And we have actually taken this slide and have communicated this out to the public. Because a lot of times, the public doesn't really necessarily know, like, where do I fit in this whole thing, right? And so during convocation, even with a lot of our classified employees that even took the IMVUSD and even the strategic plan sessions, we also explained to them that, hey, you have several roles. One is if you are a staff member, you have one role. But also if you're a community member and you're a parent, that's another role. And so we wanted to make sure that they understood, you know, where exactly do they fit within the ecosystem of the district, right? So it was very enlightening. A lot of them appreciated just this, this graphic alone. So when Superintendent Schrum launched this, he kind of gave us these two images, right? On the left, you saw this kind of arrows that were going in various different directions. And there you see some boxes, and those are really our major funding streams or sources. The ALCAP, we're all familiar with, the CONAP is another one, which is our federal funds. And then you have facilities plan, our school site plans, all those things kind of working, but necessarily in alignment. And then you have these kind of pockets of excellence, right? Things that are going well and great within our district, but not necessarily all aligned in the same way. And then on the right, you see all these arrows going in the same direction because they're framed through, first, what you started with is the core beliefs and commitments. But then, and then we get the strategic plan and long-range facility master plan, which also gives us that clarity. And so that's where we're aiming for, forward. And also in this title, it says, "A Community-Driven Blueprint for the Future." We definitely heard the board, we heard you loud and clear, that it was important that it was not done in isolation, but it was done with the community actually giving us feedback and input. So in the next slide, you're actually going to see what that looks like, right? And so these are our data sources. And to the left, you're going to see 1,700 individuals, students, staff, families, businesses, or business partners and community members participated in in-depth listening sessions. And many of you actually participated in those as well with us. Want to thank our principals who are here in the room tonight because they were integral in the, just being able to have those committee, those staff listening sessions at their sites. And so we're able to get a lot of our teacher input, classified feedback as well. And that was through this. There are six questions that they were able to give written responses, right, to us. So it was super key. From that, those listening sessions, we had 9,400 ideas that were developed through that. 138,000 of those ideas were rated, right? So 138 ratings to those 9,000 ideas, 9,400 ideas. And then, and then in addition to that, we had our online survey, right? So you have to add 1,700 plus that 11,300, right? To give us a total amount of the input that we got, feedback for the strategic plan. And this included students, staff, families, business partners, again, heavily on the student level. So again, I want to thank our principals because they did an amazing job of working with their teachers. I want to thank the teachers as well, who really just, you know, engaged with, with us in making sure that student voice was a huge part of this as well. And so that was super important, right? So you see that those totals there, right, the 1,700 plus 11,300, that truly make up all of the voices that were a part of this, this plan. And then out of that, we received 27,000 comments, right, that were shared on the surveys, right? So, and that's the, the online survey that we received. So we had both multiple choice questions, right, quantitative, but we also have qualitative, a lot of open-ended questions, right, that we were able to look at. And so from that, we worked with the partner that, that the board, that we brought to the board back in January, I believe, or December. And they helped us to really look at the data. And so through that, initially, there have been some top areas of strength, right? So through all those pieces of data, right, almost like 14,000, you know, people have taken this, this, these surveys, and they've been aggregated to these five areas, right? So top areas of strength are academic options, right, and everything that's under there. Preschool, right, that we see is our early learning, right? And making sure that that's strong and our community and students, et cetera, feel that that's, that's so. So thank you so much to our team there. Non-academic programs, right? And so those are just things that And so those are just things that we see, like the arts and athletics and those areas, right, with that are extensions of the academic day. Challenging, engaging classes, right? 80% of students responding to surveys agreed are or strongly agreed for classes were both challenging and engaging. Okay, so that's really coming from the student voice. And then we had welcoming schools, right? 90% of students responded to their survey that they agreed or strongly agreed that they were welcome, they felt welcome in school. Okay. And again, that goes back to the commitment for student learning, right? That in their states that we have welcoming schools, right, and welcoming sites. And so that's what we're seeing from our, from the data. The top areas of improvement, you're going to see some overlap in some, right? Because as well as we're strong in some, we always need to improve, right? And so accountability for, and I got to look at my slides because that's a little small. And my eyes are, as I get older, they're getting a little bit more. And so accountability for behavior. So we know that that's something that definitely our community called out and we're continues to working on, just like Assistant Superintendent DeMeo and his team just gave us some updates on some of the areas to support students. Updated technology, right? People will always feel that technology is something that's at the forefront because it's changing all the time, right? Just think about your cell phone. What was the last version that was updated from the one that you just had, probably like three months ago? And then they're already asking you to update that phone, right? And so technology is always updating. Diversity of learning opportunities, so that we continue to create a wide swath of options for students, right, to engage in. CTE, a lot of internships, right, those type of things, athletics. And so how do we continue to provide that, those options? Smaller class size is another area that, that the survey brought up. And then that we continue to look at staff input and collaboration. Where do we have those opportunities to do that, right? And so you continue to see when we do our quarterly reports, that those are, those are there, but you know, we can always engage more even at the site level. And so with that, moving forward, so what's going to happen from now till when we bring the strategic plan in November? So if you see here, this kind of flow chart is in August, we're really focused on our vision, mission, and themes. Okay, so all that data that you saw, what are the big themes that we're getting from that? In September, we're going to look at focus areas. We're going to look at initiatives and metrics, start to look at what is it that we have in the system currently that aligns with those themes and focus areas. And there we'll have some time with the board to engage there and get your feedback. And then also, and then at that point, we're going to take all that information, right? And we're going to bring it back to the work team, who, again, in my notes, I had to thank. So our work team is about 20 people, community members, classified, certificated, as well as classified certificate management. And so they have been working tirelessly since March to be able to kind of get this going. We've worked with executive cabinet, and now we're going to be working with cabinet and directors to be able to kind of get the next, flesh out the next kind of pieces of this. And then we'll bring that all back in October for that first draft, right? And then that first draft, the board will receive it, provide feedback. We'll take that back, review the draft with the community through, through online survey, et cetera. So we have some feedback back from the community on what we proposed. And then we'll bring the final draft to the board in November for approval. Okay? And so that's, that's just a high-level review of where we're at with the strategic plan. So any questions?
Any board comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Pacina.
I'll just say thank you for asking students, and I love all the responses that they turned in and just the amount of surveys. And the 90% of them feel welcome. That's awesome. And the third classes are challenging.
Thank you. It was definitely a team effort, and a lot of them are here today, tonight. So I just want to thank them for all the work that they did. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Six, general public comment. General public comment in any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time that the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and the understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to the board policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I did not get any green sheets. Is there any public comment? Okay, we're going to move on. Moving to the consent agenda, number seven. Would any board member like to pull any consent items? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I still move.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Belt, second by board member Casper Saleno. Motion passes unanimously with board member Naylor absent. Eight, student representative report. Ms. Eliana Juarez, welcome, welcome, and we're anxious to hear your report.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm here to share the student board report. At Aldi Amonte High School, Aldi Amonte ASB gave a warm welcome back to students on Thursday, August 10. Seniors started their day at 6:00 AM while celebrating senior sunrise. On Friday, August 11, Aldi Amonte hosted its Welcome Back Rally. Students learned the minor cowl up and watched cheer and dance, and watched the cheer and dance team perform. Aldi Amonte had its icebreaker dance on Friday, August 18, at the pole deck. Students were invited to meet new people while playing fun activities. Aldi Amonte had its annual Fall Club Rush on Friday, August 18. A variety of over 40 clubs ranging from CSF to Guitar Club participated in the event. At Golden West High School, Golden West kicked off the year with all students attending their first rally at 8:30 AM on the first day of school, where they learned cheers, a new dance, and played some games. The second day, Golden West saw all of the teachers from every department participating in activities where they were out with students playing cornhole, coloring together, or sitting in the junk tank. Golden West Senior Sunrise and Back to Golden West's Senior Sunrise and Back to School Blazer Bash capped off an amazing first week of activities. Golden West is celebrating Blazer Country Colors Week to teach students about school colors and to offer opportunities to participate in the beginning-of-the-year athletic events. At Mount Whitney High School, Mount Whitney's Senior Sunrise was a great success as they started their last first day of school together, watching the sun come up. Mount Whitney's first Friday of the school year was filled with fun and celebration as they celebrated the Barbie-themed pole party. Mount Whitney is looking forward to finding freshman class leaders in the next week as they hold freshman elections. Mount Whitney had their first home football game on Friday, August 18, against Tulare Union. They came together to support the team by uniting in a maroon out night. At Redwood High School, Redwood hosted their icebreaker dance and rally last Friday. It was their first time back in the gym in three years, and it was a huge success. Senior sunrise took place last Friday and it was great to see the seniors in the bowl enjoying their first morning of school together. On August 17, the Redwoods, the Redwood Boys Varsity Water Polo Team won their home non-conference game against Tulare Western by a score of 18 to 4. Club Rush will be happening on Wednesday, August 30. Clubs will be at the chance to make connections and encourage new membership. At Sequoia High School, Sequoia had an amazing first day of school. Students and staff are greeted with a full-on taco bar provided by Sequoia High School ASP and Campus Life. The Sequoia Sports Program will start the week of August 28 with the first force for being volleyball. Sequoia XL After School Program will start edutainment after-school classes starting August 22. Sequoia will host our Back to School Night, August 24. At VCIS, VCIS successfully welcomed back a record number of students at Roundup the week of August 1. They also held a special meet-and-greet orientation on Thursday, August 10, where every student was able to meet their supervising teacher for the upcoming school year. VCIS will host Back to School Night on both campuses on Thursday, September 7, at 6:00 PM. For the first time ever, VCIS will be bringing nine of their student leaders to the CADA Student Leadership Conference in Hanford this fall. VCIS ASB is beginning a project to revamp their clothing closet, which provides clothing and other essentials to VCIS students in need. ASB is looking to turn it into a no-cost, vintage shopping experience to make it more fun, inclusive, and positive for students to utilize. At VTAC, VTAC is celebrating their seniors with senior sunrise on the 11th. It was a great turnout, and the students are excited for their senior year. VTAC can't wait for Club Rush, which will be during lunch, August 25. The students have the opportunity to learn about existing clubs like esports, Spanish, FFA, and Bible Club. And new this year, VTAC has a photography club. VTAC ASB is hosting the first-ever Let's Kick It Night, September 8. It will include dancing and fun activities for all students. That is all I have for the student board report.
Thank you so much. Yep, did a good job. Thank you. Now, yes. Now I'll move on to board member reports. Board member Belt.
Thank you, President Gamoyan. All of us, I think, had some activity or element of seeing the convocation, the activities that were involved in every school site, but then also first days of school. I enjoyed being able to actually roam with several, whether it was Mr. Thompson or Mr. Schrum, to school sites and see firsthand what the first day of school was like. And it is massive, all the moving parts. Then to attend the Goshen End of Summer Bash, I think she called it. The, to see the community that turned out to really assist and be available at 105 degrees on a Saturday was outstanding. This morning, as my teacher wife and I were driving to her Tuesday site to do music, she said something that struck me. In her 17 years of VISA Unified, it hit her more today than ever before because she hears her husband talk about this night and day that most people really don't realize, all the moving parts and all the people that it takes for every day to have education happen for every student. And we said that as we're sitting in a very long line at Lover's Lane in Houston, watching parents being patient to get their students into school, buses trying to navigate around those, those parents. More anything else, a lot of happy faces roaming our school campuses, exciting, excited to learn again. Thank you, Mr. Schrum and all of our staff. You have made a monumental effort to not only make the first day the best day ever, but this year, the best year ever. Thanks.
Thank you. Board member Vegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyan. I will echo Trustee Belt's comments. I got to spend some time on the first day of school with our superintendent Kirk Schrum. I went out to Ridgefield Middle School as well as Green Acres Middle School. And I think what was great is all the things we looked at in that slideshow on day one, getting to know one another, you know, making sure students feel safe and comfortable. But I believe I was with Trustee Gaby at one of our classrooms where we visited, where there was instruction happening on day one, and that was just so amazing to see see our teachers or students getting after it and really ready to learn and engage on day one. And I just, I'm so excited to see, you know, what the rest of the school year looks like. So thank you, and thank you to all of our staff, our teachers, our admin. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you. Board member Casper Saleno.
Yeah, I wanted to just sort of remind everyone that we live really, really close to one of the most amazing national parks, Sequoia National Park. And I really do, I'm a firm believer that education, you know, happens outside of our classrooms too. And so while the summer can be a crazy, crazy time to visit Sequoia because of all the tourists, it really does start to slow down here, especially in September and October, and it's just a really beautiful place to go. So I had a couple reminders for people. Remember that if you're a fourth grader, you have, or you have a fourth grader in your home, that you can get a free pass to all of our national parks, not just Sequoia, but you get a free pass for the year. You do have to check it out online. You have to get a special little voucher. But you take that with you, and your family can get into the parks for free for the year. So remember that that's out there. Sequoia is doing a Free National Park Day on September, Saturday, September 23. So it will be free entrance on that day as well. So if you don't have a fourth grader, your family can still try and get him for free on that Saturday. And then also, Sequoia, if you haven't been before, they do a really cool festival. This year, it's on Saturday, September 9. That's the weekend of Labor Day. It's called their Dark Sky Festival. It's one of the few places, really, they get smaller and smaller, fewer and fewer, where you can experience a truly completely dark sky. And they set up different telescopes at different places. They have sometimes astronauts that will talk to kiddos. It's a really cool event. So if you're around Labor Day weekend, I think it's Labor Day weekend, I could be wrong. It might be the weekend after. You can check it out. Thanks.
Thank you. Board member Otto.
I just want to add a little bit to what board members Vegas and Belt have already leaned into. We're back at work in the school district. 29,000 kids, 3,000 staff members, making school happen every day. It doesn't just happen. Superintendent Schrum just said that. It happens because we come together with the purpose of educating the kids, and we do a good job, and time flies fast. We are nine days in to the school year. That's 5% of the year. That sounds like a small number, but it adds up quickly. Every day is important. The first day is critical because it sets the tone for the rest of the year. We had a good first day. I'm sure there were kinks and problems, there always are. But those are overcome by teachers and staff members working together with kids to do the best they can every day to make sure that kids leave smarter at the end of the day than when they arrived. And that's what we're all about here. So thanks to all of you in the room and all of you throughout the community who made, make school work every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Board clerk Gaby.
Well, that was so well said. I like this spot. I can just say ditto, and definitely best first day ever, and excited to be back.
I love seeing all the principals here. I'm sure you all wanted to come. But I love that you're all here and the department heads, that just makes, you know, just looking at all those faces makes me really happy. And I'll be visiting a lot of you in the near future. It was a great first day of school. I just want to thank you, principals. You are doing an amazing job. Thank you. Mr. Schrum.
All right. Well, thank you. I also echo that. I just want to say how proud I am of this team, and by team, I mean everyone in VISA Unified for getting us already started and well underway. And look forward to great things this year. Our teachers, our parents, our students, our staff, our principals, all working together to make this happen. And so I know we're on the way to an exceptional year focused on student learning outcomes, and so that all of our students show growth this year. And we move all of our kids toward proficiency or beyond. And that's really what our purpose is, is the school system at the end of the day. If students aren't learning, we're not doing our job. And so we're committed to making sure, as you see in our foundation documents, this board is committed to making sure our students are learning and all of our team being equipped to do that. So looking forward to exceptional year. Also have one recognition I'd like to make. So, you know, there are a lot of great things happening in VUSD. And one of the things we made a commitment to do is to start making sure we're also telling our story. And not only through, you know, locally, through media, through social media, and all of those things, but also, you know, at CSBA, at other opportunities and conferences. And so when we have exemplary programs like our ELOP and, and our things that we're doing for, within our student support services, you know, it's important also that we present those things when we get chances. And so we've encouraged our team to do that because not only do others get to learn from us, but then we also learn from what others are doing, and that's how we all get better together. And so in that spirit, we have received Golden Bell. And so the Golden Bell Award, CSBA puts together different categories for recognition. And this is like either people or programs or things that have been recognized in exemplary level. And so unbeknownst to this individual, we had a special nomination made and very excited to share that our own Andre Pacina has been recognized by the CSBA as a Golden Quill Awards winner, Certificate of Excellence in Journalism, for telling our story. And so congratulations to Andre. I'd like to present.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture with?
We can do a picture.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to just say total surprise, but this is really for our district and not for myself. Want to thank all the principals and our communications team that works tirelessly to get our word out. And so let's continue to do that because we're having some amazing things happening in our district and we should be proud of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacina. 11.1, Report on Current State of Facilities and Enrollment. Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez, Chief Operation Officers Eric Kerr, Assistant Superintendent of Education Services Andy DeMeo.
Good evening, President Gamoyen, members of the school board, Superintendent Schrum. So this is an information item only tonight, and I'm going to be joined, as you mentioned, Mr. Kerr and Mr. DeMeo, to talk about the current state of our district facilities and some of our high-impact sites where we have development happening as well as our enrollment. Just a couple of housekeeping items. This presentation was updated so we could provide you with the most up-to-date information on some of these, some of these items. And so what you have in your packet tonight is the most up-to-date. I actually have numbers from this morning, so I'll share that. As well as, as I mentioned, there'll be more information that will be provided later. This is informational only as we start to talk about, you know, thinking about our, our foundation and our strategic plan. But as our long-range facility master plan, those study sessions start to happen, we'll share more information with the board and make some decisions and actions around some of the things that we'll be sharing about tonight. And so I want to start just going through, again, we're going to talk about enrollment. We're also going to look at some of the projections for the next five years and what that looks like. Mr. Kerr will share our facility and our capacity, school capacities and the current utilizations. And Mr. DeMeo will talk about how that impacts those high-impact sites with, where, where students will attend school and there's, when they're at capacity. Just to kind of share our day six enrollment, so this is sharing current year, 23, 24 versus 22, 23. You see in those grade spans TK 6, 7, 8, and 9, 12, you see adjustments. These, this will continue to be adjusted throughout the next couple of months until our official enrollment day, which is in October. And you can see as of day six, we're slightly down 61, it's not really, it's not, it's really pretty flat. Because when we looked at enrollment yesterday, the number was 28,940, which was up from prior fiscal year. So again, these numbers will change. We are, you know, we'd use 19, 20 as kind of our benchmark, our high point, and we are down about 300 students from that time. But as we look at impact of enrollment across the state, the state is down 1.7%. The district and the county over the last four years are down less than, or at about a half a percent. And so we are doing, in, in this trend, better than the state. But there are some shifts that are happening, happening programmatically. And so, you know, when we think about TK and that expansion and what happens in secondary. But just to kind of share our, our projections, you can see out across the years, just visually, it is pretty flat. There's some growth there, but our projections are that we are pretty flat by, by school, school age levels. So let me go to the next one. You can see it better. When, when we look at like our TK, we see growth from 19, 20 to the 20, 28, 29 projection of close to 1,000 students. Again, moving that grade level to take in all four-year-olds on our campuses. And, but our TK through six across that same is overall flat or slight decline. So more TK, smaller grades in first, second, third, fourth, et cetera. And then again, 9 through 12 over that same period, 19, 20, which is again our high point to where we're projecting out 28, 29 growth of 480 students. So while overall in the district, we are flat in enrollment, there are programmatic changes that are requiring us to, to, to have to respond to things that are happening in particular areas of town where TK has growth, 9 through 12 secondary has, has growth as well. So we're going to talk about some of our more impacted sites, but I also wanted to share what that enrollment looks like at Annie Mitchell, Denton, Riverway, and Redwood High Schools. When we look at 19, 20 versus our projection in 28, 29, you know, we don't physically have space to have 1,000 students at Annie Mitchell or 1,000 students at Riverway Elementary. And so those are the kind of things that we're going to be talking about tonight. But we wanted to share with you first, some of the projections and our current enrollment at some of these school sites. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, board. I have to say I'm really excited to be able to share this. So this first slide, let me do a little bit of explanation. So these, the schools that are listed on this, these eight schools are schools that are at over 100% capacity. And if you look at the first column right here, I call that net capacity. So it's a little technical here, but the net capacity is simply the permanent capacity of that school based on how it was built, less any classrooms that are pulled out for specialized programs. So specialized learning centers, SLCs, any classrooms that we have that are the county classrooms or anything like that. So we're calling that the net capacity for these schools. And that number, we take the day six enrollment, so we're consistent on our enrollment. We're using day six, which was, I think, last Thursday. We're using the day six enrollment and we're taking that number and dividing it by the permanent capacity. And that gives us the current, what we're calling utilization of that school. So those eight schools are over 100% capacity. And so we see we've got some elementary schools here, we have a middle school, and obviously we have Redwood. So I think there's probably not too many surprises there, although some of these numbers are pretty high. The thing to remember on the portables here, where we've got temporary portables, you'll see some of these schools have zero. Shannon Ranch doesn't have any. So some sites do have room for additional portables. We also have some listed on this that do not have any additional room for portables. The infrastructure doesn't support it. There's physically not enough real estate left on some of these sites. So that is a consideration and that's why we go back to the net capacity for planning purposes. We want to use the capacity on how the school is built as opposed to using what we can squeeze in there as far as temporary classrooms. So this first slide, over 100%. So there's a theme here as we go through these. The next one are over 95%. So this is a little bit shorter. But again, we've got some more elementary, three elementary schools, and then El Diamante shows up on here. So again, same rationale, the net capacity, the permanent capacity, less any programmatic rooms that we pull out, day six enrollment, and then the utilization there. So 95, 96, 98. So it's interesting, there are 12 out of our 42 schools are at least are over 95% capacity. So that's about not quite 29%, about 28.5% are over 95% capacity based on their permanent or what we're calling net capacity. Now, the next, the next slide here is school sites that are less than 80% of that same net capacity. This list is on two slides. So we have some schools that are underutilized or under 80% capacity. Again, we're using the same rationale, net capacity, the day six enrollment, and then we're just doing a simple division problem, right? So we've got some elementary schools here, but some of these numbers are pretty low. So things to think about as, as we look at how we utilize our school sites and whether we need to build new schools or do we need to make some different decisions on how we better serve our students. So interestingly enough, seven on this page and then four more. So we have 11, so almost like 27% are less than 80% utilized. So you've got about, what, what was it, 29 and 27? So, you know, 30, like almost not quite 60%, 50-some percent are either way overcapacity or nearing capacity and, and then underutilized. So Mount Whitney on here, 76%. Seeing the, the enrollment here and the net capacity of those. Interestingly enough, three out of our five middle schools show on, show up on this list. So just some data, it's important that we just look at the data and kind of see what do we see and not try and make any, any real, can draw any conclusions at this point. And I think, Mr. DeMeo, you're up next.
Thank you, sir. So in continuing that process of just considering the data, what are we seeing? I wanted to share with you just a couple graphics to give you a bit of a visual. Mr. Kerr and Mr. Hernandez have talked about capacity issues, what schools can house. It's, it's, it's important for us to hear that we're not saying schools are closed, right? They're full. That's never the case. We're going to take care of all of our students, but where we take care of them needs to look a little bit different perhaps. Mr. Hernandez suggested that some schools have reached what we call capacity. So what I've listed for you up here are the quadrants of our city and the schools in those quadrants that have either reached capacity at a particular grade level or in some cases, the entire school is at capacity for the reasons that Mr. Kerr and Mr. Hernandez have, have talked about earlier. Now, when we say a school has reached capacity, again, we take care of all of our students. And again, the nice thing about Visalia is we are a place where people are still coming to our community. We aren't experiencing a great deal of a declining enrollment, great problem to have. So what that means is a child comes to our school and unfortunately, the secretary has to say, "We're welcoming you to the city of Visalia." Unfortunately, our school is at capacity. So what it's our job to do then is to work with the family and find a school site that is near there where we'll be able to take care of their students and educate them in the best way possible. Another thing I wanted to show you is this particular site. So you have an idea of how many, how many students are we talking about? So what this chart is going to show you are the schools, that you've seen these schools come up before, and the amount of students that as of last Thursday have been outplaced. And I also listed on the right, the particular grade levels where outplacement is occurring. Because remember I said in some cases, it's a particular grade level. In other cases, it's the entire school itself. Now, it goes without saying, if we are at a situation where we're doing outplacements, then the opportunity to allow parents to transfer to that school is also not an option, right? Because again, if we're having to outplay students who live in that area, we're not able to take students who would like to go there for various reasons. So again, as we've talked about this evening, we're not looking for loose solutions just yet. We just wanted to kind of talk about where we are, our current state. And Mr. Kerr is going to talk to us about some potential next steps.
Okay, so a little bit kind of by way of wrapping up, you know, we're, we're completing our long-range facility master plan. And that's going to be a big part of this discussion. That plan will identify urgent, short-term, medium-term, and long-term solutions and things that we, that they recommend based on their site assessments. The one thing I do want to say about the long-range facility master plan is don't be surprised when we bring it to you if it's upwards of 500 million to close to a billion dollars in needs that they find. That's not unusual when districts, especially districts our size undertake these long-range facility master plan. They're architects, they're engineers, they're, they're tech people. They do a very extensive study on all of our facilities and they, they, they poll the community. They look at the demographics, they poll GIS data, they poll polling, voting data. And so they pull all that together and they will do all that work and help us to sort through those and help this board be able to make some decisions and some priorities. So that's coming up. So this, what we're covering right now and what is our current reality with our enrollment and our capacity at our school sites will just be one small part of that entire discussion that we'll have to have. We'll analyze the programmatic impact on spaces. You know, this is something that we've talked about Prop 28 and we're so excited to be able to have VAPA, TK through three, and PE for our littles. But it is also, it also impacts our sites that we have instructional spaces for those activities to be able to happen. And so when we look at what a school, how a school site was built, especially in an older school site, they weren't built with those instructional spaces in mind. And so we have to consider that. We also have to consider how we offer our special ed services and making sure that we're doing that appropriately based on school site and based on that population that we need to serve. And so all of those programmatic impact will be another piece of data that will go into this discussion along with the long-range facility master plan. And then as you start to have that discussion, some options will start to come out, right? This is where we want to go, but it's really important that we don't get there too quickly without looking at everything. So we may talk about boundaries. You may talk about programs. Certainly, funding is going to take, be a huge part. We're going to be meeting with the city of Visalia to kind of partner with them on additional funding opportunities that we may, we may have with the new developments in the city, new construction. And then grade level configuration. So what grade levels should be at our middle schools? Should they continue to be 7, 8? Should they be 6, 7, 8? Should they be something else? And so those types of things will be, again, all part of the bigger discussion. So it's not just the long-range plan. It's not just boundaries. It's, everything has to be rolled together. And then on top of all of that, lots of community input so that we can kind of then help you inform the decision that you need to make. And we look at spring of 2024 to start to present some proposals for discussion and feedback. Oh, I did want to also add, we will potentially bring different options to you, very much like the, you had for the trustee boundaries. So again, just a small piece, not the one piece that we will use, but just another small piece. And so lots of options, lots of things to consider as we go forward. So it will be lots of work. That's why we didn't want to kind of get to any kind of conclusions on this, just really present you with kind of the current state of where we're at based on our day six enrollment. So I think with that, any questions?
I think, Mr. Schrum.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, well, no, just want to thank the team again, you know, this, anytime you start to talk about configurations, boundaries, all, you know, people immediately get worried, what's going to happen? And jump into a, a solution phase and start to assume certain things. And so why we wanted to do this report is really to lay out to our board and community that we're going to be engaging in a thoughtful process, right? This isn't going to be, oh, let's just throw different things against the wall. Or, oh, let's just do boundaries. That'll solve all our problems, right? Or let's, you know, it's going to take a comprehensive approach to be able to address the growth within our community, which I think Assistant Superintendent DeMeo says is a great thing to have, right? And so how do we create campuses all across our district where you live in the neighborhood, you can go there? There are programs that you want to, to participate in there, right? And how do we engage in this in a thoughtful way? And so I think we're going to be looking at, as we go through this fall, we get the long-range plan, we look at those data sources, we start to generate options. And I also want to echo what was said tonight about, options will not be presented in isolation. So we're going to be presenting a plethora of things that could be combinations. There's going to be some outside-of-the-box thoughts and, and things that we're going to share as well. All transparent to a community to really start to think about, well, how would this affect me? And maybe that is a good idea and really generate a stage, as you see on, on the, on that last slide of the fall and early spring, whereas a community and a board, we talk about different things, right? And then drive toward more concrete solutions toward the spring that will ultimately become the options that we'll select from. So I think it's actually going to be a fun process as we think about what could the future of our schools, configurations and design look like. I actually am excited about it. And so I think we're going to be able to do some great things for our community that sets up future success for years to come. And so I'm excited about this process. But we also wanted to take this opportunity just to give our current status because I don't know if that's happened before. And I think it's important that our community really see, well, what is happening? What are our numbers and where are we having impact? And then where do we have opportunities? So thank you to this team. And now I'll turn it back over to Board President Gamoyen and the board for any questions.
Board members, questions, comments?
I had a question. I was hoping to get some clarification on the, I think it's slide 11, the outplacements by city/region. And, and the reason I ask is because there's some schools there, there, which I expected to see because they're sort of, you know, 100% capacity. But for example, Crowley on the northeast is part of that. And from my reading of the data, Crowley is one of those sites that has underutilization. So am I understanding this correctly, that we still have outplacements at Crowley? Even though the site is underutilized? And if so, could you explain that?
Sure. So that's one of the examples of a particular grade level. So at some of our schools, while there might be room at the school in general, perhaps at a particular grade level, we've had an influx. I mean, I remember well as a elementary. I mean, I remember well as a elementary principal and my colleagues know this, um, our students don't come to us in exact numbers like 21st graders, 22nd graders type thing. So because of that, in some cases, we do have to outplace because we just don't have any more space in that particular grade level. Great question.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yeah, just want to say thank you very much for the report tonight, you structured it very well. And it's a starting point for understanding what is one of the most difficult things that a school district deals with, which is loading kids equity into schools. And there's geographic and income and all kinds of, of things that tie into that. But really what it comes down to is parents being assured that my kid's going to get a great experience in whatever school they're at. The fact that we've got in front of us now a buildings database to allow us to build perception accurately about what's going on is a great, great, great first step. So thanks folks very much for that work.
Question, there questions or comments?
Um, just a quick question, when we're looking at the, uh, six-year enrollment projection, obviously it's a projection, there's not a crystal ball. Um, so what is the margin sort of of error or, or do you, if you don't know, no, no problem, I don't want to put you on the spot. But I assume there's got to be some margin of error that says that might, that could be off.
I'd have to look at the report, it's done by our demographer, I'd have to look to see if there's any margin of error.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. 11.2, notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of provisional intern permit request. That would be a fit.
They always trick me and turn it off. All right, thank you, board president, uh, members of the board superintendent. I am, uh, coming here this evening to request your approval to, uh, for us to move forward with two of our teachers, uh, to be on a provisional internship permit to provide them additional time to become internet eligible for their credential.
Do I have a motion to approve the provisional intern permit request?
I'll make a motion.
All second. On a motion by board member Vegas, second by board clerk Gabby, all in favor? Come on. Oops.
Student board representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously with board member Naylor absent.
11.3, warrant list, July 1st through July 27th, 2023, um, chief business officer Hernandez.
So this is our routine item to approve the warrant list from July 1st through the 27th.
Do I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
Move to approve.
All second.
On a motion by board member Odo and a second by Kasebe Solano on favor.
Student board representative votes yes, motion passes five with, uh, board member Vegas abstaining and board member Naylor absent.
And on that note, this meeting is now adjourned.